Silver medal in this year's Games. This after she had a tumble from the balance beam. Tell us about her day.
Yeah, you know, Simone Biles has commanded these Summer Games. She's the biggest star here, clearly. But she looked a little bit more human today on the balance beam. As you say, she slipped, she fell to the mat. Her score was not strong enough to win any medal in that event. She bounced back for the floor competition, for that silver. There was just an adoring crowd here in Paris for her. And here's what she said afterward.
Wasn't my best performances, but at the end of the day, you just never know with gymnastics. So I'm not, I'm not very upset or anything about my performance at the Olympics. I'm actually very happy, proud, and even more excited that it's over. The stress of it.
And so Biles is 27 years old, the most decorated gymnast ever with 11 Olympic medals, 30 world championship medals.
Oh, my goodness.
And one thing we really don't know, Scott, is what she's going to do now. You know, she tweeted this week, she doesn't want to answer that question about her future while she's still celebrating what happened here in Paris.
All right, Americans learn two new games in these Games in the gymnastics. Brazil's Rebecca Andrade, she won gold in floor exercise. And there's Algeria's Kalia Nemour, she won gold on the uneven bars. Tell us what stood out about their performances.
Yeah, these women were new to me too, Scott. Kalia Nemour, she's of Algerian heritage but lives and trains here in France, competed for Algeria after the French team decided not to clear her for competition. And she was masterful on the uneven bars. She really laid out these long body extensions between the bars. She seemed to kind of float in the air. And for Rebecca Andrade, you know, today was just a stunning moment. She grew up in a, in a struggling community in Brazil. Her mom had a difficult time just paying for her bus fare to get to the gym. But she's been really strong on the Olympic circuit the last couple of times. And, and she won two silver and a bronze here and then capped it today with this great performance, a gold medal with that narrow win over Simone Biles.
Yeah, and beaming as she, as she received her gold medal. Brian, swimming, that part of the Games ended with two American golds paired with world records. One was the women's medley relay and the other was the 1500, won by the American Bobby Fink. He has far less attention, yeah, than his distance swimming counterpart Katie Ledecky. But I gather they know each other, they train together, they push each other?
Yeah, that's right. There's actually this really cool video online of Katie Ledecky cheering for Bobby Fink as he pushed for that world record Sunday night. She's just going crazy, you know, kind of waving him on. And this US team is very close, you know, and it helped a lot this week when a lot of America's best athletes were struggling in the pool. And press conferences, they talked about supporting each other and it clearly paid off. You know, they bounced back. The last couple of days, they won half of the team's eight gold medals in just the last two days. And, and they broke three world records here, including that amazing Bobby Fink performance.
Yeah. Brian, other sports you're looking forward to this coming week, perhaps, you know, that we see less on TV, that get a little attention, that get less attention?
You know, Scott, I'm an old high school wrestler, so I'm going to be following the freestyle in Greco-Roman wrestling. Yep, this is my little spoiled thing to get to go do. And one thing that's interesting about this is Russia's kind of a no show at these Olympics. Usually they're America's big rival in, on the mats. So US could really boost their medal count with that. I'll also be following Taekwondo and a lot of track and field events. You know, as you say, we're halfway through the days here in Paris, but so much sport still to come.
Yeah. And finally, how do you think about how Paris is pulling off these Games? On the one hand, I'm reading, well, I'm seeing on TV, the energy looks amazing. France has outperformed in medals compared to previous Olympics. On the other hand, we're also reading about a dirty sand river. I don't know, you know, whose fault that is for the triathlon, open water swimming, and athletes complaining about food and the beds.
Yeah, you know, I have to say, after this first week, and obviously we have days still to go, I think this Paris Olympics is going to be remembered as one of the greats. I mean, things always go wrong with a production on this scale. Venues don't turn out quite the way they were supposed to do. Sometimes cities lose a lot of money. And, and we'll see where all that adds up. But overall, Paris has turned out to be just this amazing backdrop for these competitions, whether it's an American cyclist ripping through the streets of Paris on her bicycle, winning gold, whether it's that great Grand Palais where the fencers have been. Things have gone pretty well and it's been very safe. The security's been, been fine. And so I think so far, at least, we're looking at a, a gold or very, or at least a silver medal for Paris for what we've seen so far.
Yeah, Brian, and we got a couple of seconds. Tell us about that American cyclist, my goodness.
Yeah, that was really remarkable. She just came from out of nowhere and, and won a gold medal. This is really going to be a great story to follow.
All right, and here's Brian Mann at the Paris Olympics. Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Scott Tong in Washington DC.
And I'm Deepa Fernandez in Alameda, California. It's Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and Insurify.com. Today is Monday, August 5th. Insurify is an insurance comparison site that is proud to sponsor NPR. Radio IQ is here for you 24/7, 365 days a year. This public nonprofit radio station is committed to providing you up-to-the-minute newscasts and thought-provoking talk shows. You never know what you'll learn when you listen to Radio IQ. So keep it tuned here and don't forget, you can also tell your smart speaker to play Radio IQ. Plus, you can stream us online at radioiq.org or download the Radio IQ app so you can take us wherever you go.
I think the importance of the correspondence is that, you know, JD has tried to explain why he changed his mind on Donald Trump. But I think what the American people deserve to know is...
The 2:00 PM session of Roanoke City Council was hereby called to order. And I'll ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the row.
Mr. Volleson?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Ms. White Boyd?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here, and I call Ms. President. I'm pleased to recognize this afternoon Reverend Milton Hardy Jr., who is the Associate Pastor of Greater Prior Temple, who will lead us in our invocation. And following the invocation, I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand as Reverend Milton Hardy Jr. comes. Bless you, Mayor. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we lift up the Roanoke City's council before you today, asking for your wisdom, your guidance, and your discernment in all the decisions. Grant them a spirit of unity and a heart of service, so they may lead with integrity and compassion. Help them to seek the well-being of every resident and to act justly in all matters. May your peace rest upon our eight-time All-American City and may your light guide their path. In your precious name we pray. Amen.
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 Praise the heavens to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me say welcome to everybody to our afternoon session. And let me also state that the city of Roanoke is seeking application for various vacancies on council-appointed authorities, boards, commissions, and committees. And you can access that, the city's website, to forward an application at www.roanookva.gov to complete an online application. And we encourage all of our citizens, those who are viewing us by RV TV and those here in the audience, that we encourage you to serve, serve on boards and commissions to help us in terms of governing our eight-time All-American City. And so it's an easy process. All you need to do is to go to our website or contact the clerk's office and they can walk you through the process. But we need you to serve. That's so important. And so we're always looking for citizens who are willing to step forward and to do what they can do in, in helping us on these boards, commissions, and authorities. All right, thank you. All right, first of all, the business is we're going to certify a closed meeting and I'm going to ask Mr. Volleson, Councilman Volleson, if he would make the motion.
I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded that each member of city council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that only public business matters lawfully exempted from the opening, oh, sorry, from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you please call the row?
Yes. Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Ah, thank you. All right, the first item of business this afternoon is for us to make presentations and acknowledgements. And I'm pleased to recognize our veteran and esteemed Fire and EMS Chief Hoback, if you would come, sir. And we want to recognize the Fire and EMS staff, so I will turn that recognition over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Lee, members of council, Dr. Patton. You know, it's my, it's my honor, you know, I've been with the city for a very long time, as Mayor Lee has indicated. And every time I get accolades from the field that recognize our people for such a fine and outstanding job, I'll pass it up to the city manager's office. And we'll tell you, once I pass it up to Dr. Patton, she is very quick to have one of our ACMs reach out to us and say, this is very worthy of acknowledgement, of a job well done. But not only a job well done, but an impactful job that they do for our community. So today, we're going to recognize about six people, but three were, are not able to be here due to either vacations or another commitment. But the three people that are here had a very impactful, impact on a young, new young citizen of our community. On July 24th, we had a call in southeast for a subject who was in labor. And with that call, we deployed County Medic Six, City Medic Four, both of our rescue supervisors who are advanced care paramedics in Engine One. And I will tell you, the time the call came in, we had no city medic units available. They were all dedicated to other calls and Medic Four had to come from Lewis Gell. So our system is provisioned so that we can rely on our automatic aid from Roanoke County, the city of Salem, and they likewise do the same for us. So the system worked very well. Upon being dispatched and en route, our dispatchers did a wonderful job of relaying information about what was going on. We knew that this young lady who was in labor, but soon after being deployed, we realized that the baby had been born. What we didn't realize is the gestation of the baby, which was three months premature. With being three months premature comes a lot of difficulty associated with management. County Medic Six arrived first, as they should have, given the close proximity of their station to the call. Got control of the situation, took care of the mother, situated the baby with the mother, and did a primary assessment. Following that, we had our advanced care paramedic lieutenant, Tim Rohr, arrive. He surveyed and reassessed the situation and determined that we needed, best thing to do is go ahead and get them in the county medic unit. Once they did, he reevaluated the situation and found that the, the small child, which probably fit in the palm of your hand, was not doing as well as it should be. So they immediately transferred care to that, to the people here in the audience, and then to Medic Four, who was already on the scene by now. And for those of y'all who don't know, when you have a baby, we deliver babies, you know, infrequently in the city, but we do. And most of them are, most of them are full-term. And, you know, as a paramedic or as a provider, it's one of the best things you can do is bring a life into this world and see that, you know, see that reward of what you do. But in this case, they got two rewards. They got to see the life brought into the world, into the world, but they also got to see the benefit of what they do. And they have family members here, and I want to echo that, what they do day in and day out that save, preserve, and enhance the quality of lives of our citizens. And that's what happened that day. County Medic Six remained with the mother, cared for the mother exceptionally well, got the mother to the hospital, but the baby needed a lot of help. And I will tell you that Paramedic Captain Brian Watson, Tim Rohr, who is not here today, and he apologized for that, he's at the beach on vacation. I'm sure he'd probably rather be here. And Jacob Baer, firefighter EMT, and Brady Seldenridge, firefighter paramedic, who was the paramedic on Medic Four. And they embraced, they embraced that situation and cared for that child, resuscitated that child, and got that child to the hospital where the neonate team was able to resume care. And I will tell you, they gave our team strong accolades for the stability of that child when they got there. Now, that child still has a long ways to go as it relates to being that premature. But we have an awesome NICU here at Roanoke Hospital, and we actually have one of our firefighters that had premature twins, and they did a phenomenal job. Both of them have gone home now, but they do a wonderful job. But today, we want to recognize these individuals for the job well done because what they do day in and day out, you know, some of the stuff they determined to be mundane, but in this case, it was not only the job they did, but the impact they had on that family, how they controlled the situation, the compassion they provided for that very bad situation. And if it wasn't been for the actions of these individuals and the other two that I spoke about, it could have a much different outcome as opposed to the young lady being in NICU and progressing, as far as I know, progressing relatively well, and the mother doing very good. So today, I'd like to recognize if they would come for him, Captain, Paramedic Brian Watson. He was on Engine One. And I will tell you, also, we had two, first two engines auto-serviced at the same time too, because they were on other calls. So he came from downtown, long time, and then Brady Seldenridge, firefighter paramedic, and Jacob Baer, firefighter EMT, who was driving Medic Four. I will tell you, with the exception of Tim Rohr, these are the gentlemen who really took care of that infant, stabilized that infant, got the accolades from the neonate team, and made it what it is today and where they were successful and, and that child given every opportunity to live a strong and healthy life. Because as you have that small child, everything has to change. It is not like treating even a newborn. It is, everything has to change. And these individuals are trained about what they have to do when those circumstances occur. It is kind of like a high-risk, low-frequency. It's high-risk because of the situation you're dealing with, but we don't deal with it very often, so we got to make sure we're prepared. I will tell you that we recognized all the team members that were on here on Friday that were there because they were on shift, including Roanoke County. We did bring Roanoke County down and recognize their two staff. The only person that wasn't here, and he was on military deployment, is Brady Seldenridge, and I will give him his certificate of recognition today. Historically, when we have attributes or accolades to give to our staff, we give them a certificate of recognition and we'll go beyond that and as they do a job well done. But I can tell you how much I appreciate Dr. Patton, willing to let these individuals present to you before counseling what they do, and we're very humbled for that. And I'll take any questions you may have.
Awesome, outstanding. They were on TV yesterday, weren't they?
Well, Channel 7 had pulled down Roanoke County's Facebook post, which was supposed not to have gone out, but it did. We want to wait until we present to y'all because that's the right thing to do before we actually post it on our social media. So I don't think that communication quite worked. We did have the media inquire to us about it, we refused the interview until we presented them to y'all because we felt that's the right thing to do, to let y'all hear the information first, and then we, in turn, will share it with the media. So it didn't quite work out the way we had hoped. But anyway, we did and recognized the county folks, which did a fantastic job, and we're very pleased with the relationship we have, and that automatic aid made a difference in this case, as it does most cases. But that's how come they were on TV. Because we did that Friday, and everybody got the certificate of recognition, we got a big picture made, so that's why that got out.
Great. Can we get a picture? We want to make sure to get a picture of that.
Yep.
Can y'all come to?
Can we come up there?
Oh, there she is. I was wondering, where's my photographer?
And I think somebody wants to come up and take, Mom wants to come up and take a picture too. Are y'all sure you want your pictures taken with us?
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Actually perfect, I can see you all.
Oh, God.
We'll look right here. One, two, three.
Thank you, Mom, for being here.
The one thing I do want to just mention, and the other people that were involved now to be here, is Lieutenant Adam Fleming, firefighter EMT majors, both had other commitments, couldn't make it. And then, of course, Tim Rohr was on vacation, and then Thomas Botner, he was one of the other advanced care paramedics that actually has a baby on the way, and he has some things to do with that. So he's not going to be able to make it today as well. So again, outstanding job. The county paramedics were firefighter paramedic daily and firefighter paramedic hard grilled. All right? Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Counselor, may I have any comment?
Chief, I'm not going to let you out of here without you having to be up front. I don't know that every citizen understands how our firefighters work effectively with Salem and Roanoke County, but this is a prime example of why it's important for our local governments to work together. We don't work together in a lot of ways that we should, but this is a prime example of leadership in the departments that has led us to this. I'm a preemie. I was in an incubator for a month, and there's some people who probably wish I'd stayed there. But, but, but to see what you all do and what you do in concert with our local governments is a real source of pride, and I thank you because this has been a lot of your doing and your officers doing to help us create these relationships. I have been on this council in the past where there were none. So to all the gentlemen involved and the ladies that back you up, thank you so much for a job well done. And I would suggest to council that we send either a letter from the mayor or a resolution to Roanoke County thanking them for what they do with us in multitudes of ways in Fire EMS, because I think we take things for granted. Maybe it's important for us to publicly thank them for a job well done together. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Councilman Fitzpatrick. All right, let me go down to the floor. All right, I have a couple of recognitions I want to share with my colleagues on council and everybody here and on RV TV. This is a letter from our United States Senator Mark R. Warner. And he writes that, Dear Mayor Lee, I am pleased to extend my warmest congratulations to you and the staff and residents of the city of Roanoke upon receiving the certified welcome designation by Welcoming America earlier this year as the first community to earn this certification in Virginia. This accomplishment is particularly noteworthy. This honor is a reflection of the policies and procedures and partnerships that Roanoke has put into place to ensure that residents from all backgrounds feel supported and welcomed. These efforts have made a tremendous impact on newcomers, including immigrants and refugees, by helping them feel a sense of belonging within the community that they live. The Commonwealth is made stronger when individuals within the community, and the Commonwealth is made stronger when individuals from diverse backgrounds work together, exchange ideas, and form lasting bonds. I commend the city of Roanoke for all that you've done to foster an environment where every community member is valued. On this important occasion, I am pleased to join with your families, friends, and neighbors in saluting your accomplishments and wishing you continued success. Sincerely, Mark R. Warner, United States Senator. So I just wanted to share that with you, the fact that we are a certified welcoming community.
And the first in Virginia.
First in Virginia. I always like to be the first in certain things.
Amen.
But thank you. And, and finally, I want to take this opportunity, because this has been a good year for Virginia on the national scene. You know, we won the eight-time All-American City Award. And last week, I was in New Orleans, Louisiana, attending a conference regarding the National Association of Blacks in Criminal Justice. And they were recognizing criminal justice employees from around the country, those who are involved in, in police work, sheriff work, prisons, ministries, all kinds of things. It was a good conference then, it's a national conference. It's called NAPCHA. And they recognize, I heard one of our names called, they recognize one of our own sheriff, and I want Sheriff Hatch, if you would come down. Sheriff Hatch received the Presidential Award in New Orleans last week. And when they said that this award goes to Sheriff Antonio Hatch, it's a Presidential Award, presented to him in recognition of your commitment, contribution, and dedication to bridging the gap between law enforcement and the community that you serve. The National Association for Blacks in Criminal Justice, New Orleans, Louisiana, 2024, Sherman P. Lee Jr. is the national president. And anytime you go to an event and they say, we want to recognize this person's from Roanoke, Virginia, you know, you feel a little something there. And, and of course, we know the sheriff, and I just want him to know how proud we were of him. He wasn't able to get there, but we were proud of him. And, and this indicates that we have, working among us in our sheriff's department, this sheriff who was considered one of the better sheriffs, not only in the Commonwealth of Virginia, but across the country. So thank you and sheriff, for your commitment and dedication, and I wanted to present this award to you, presented by the Presidential Award, presented by the National Association of Blacks in Criminal Justice.
Antonio, you may not want to be in this picture.
Yes, he does.
Yeah, but unfortunately, you have to do this every once in a while.
Can you see us now? I mean, I was only 16.
Thank you.
To the mayor, council, city attorney, to our interim city manager, to the city clerk, and to all of our citizens of this great, all-ataught American city, thank you. It's, it's a complete humbling experience to be able to get an award on this level because what I do day in, day out, I don't do it for recognition, I do it because my heart is in the right place. I do it because my heart is in the right place. One of the things in leadership I teach in our building next door is we always model the way. We encourage the heart. We enable others to act. We build on the process, and we aspire to share vision. Because anybody in leadership cannot do what we do alone. It takes the city coming together, working together, to make things like this happen for our city at large. And I appreciate the citizens of Roanoke City for entrusting me to do this job. And I don't take it for granted. And so, I always say this, I say we do it better when we do it together. That's from the bottom of my heart. So, thank you again to NAPCHA for this, this honor. I was trying to get there, but my grandmother's birthday was, she turned eighty-nine. And I was trying to get there and make some stuff happen. But they, they told her she had congestive heart failure. So, we were trying to honor her while she was still living, so I couldn't make it. But it's, it's a complete honor to see this award come all the way from New Orleans. I went back to Roanoke to be able to be presented in front of council. So, I don't take this for granted. So, I appreciate this opportunity. And I love what we do for this great city. Thank you so much.
I, I want to thank you personally. I was, and my family is friends with Barry Pendry.
Yes, sir.
And what you did the other day in honor of that deputy who gave his life was exceptional, particularly in the fact that it hadn't been recognized early on.
Yes, sir.
He was a great guy, and those of us who knew him had great admiration for him. But for you to do that means a whole lot. But congratulations to you and your officers and your staff. I never hear a bad word about what you're doing. And the fact that you're proactive makes all the difference in the world. So, thank you so much for a job well done.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you.
You know, that's a great part of what we do here on council is recognizing our citizens, our employees, for what they do to make life better in our community. It's always an honor and a privilege to do that. All right, Madam Clerk, I think we're down to hearing of citizens.
That's correct.
All right, hearing of citizens upon public matters. City council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. And all matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to council as she may deem appropriate. And Madam Clerk, do we have any citizens that have signed up?
Yes, we do. We have approximately seven, eight, eight.
Eight speakers?
Yes.
All right, could you call them in order that they signed up, please?
I will. I'll call two at a time. Derek Horton and Alan Henry.
My name is Derek Horton. Quite the pleasure to be able to speak and address you, Honorable Mayor Sherman Lee and the esteemed members of the council. I, I own property in our southeast, 729 Tazewell, a commercial property. Do you mind if he passes you all a packet? Well, I own property in our southeast, and one of them is a commercial property, 729 Tazewell. And we went to get permits for the design that we wanted to put. We were trying to change the look of the neighborhood. It's very distressed. A lot of drugs infested and, you know, just trying to change the look. Maybe we can change the mindset, maybe make it look a little different right there. And maybe others will follow suit. Well, we, uh, well, we went to get the permits and ran in a thirty-six, three sixty-two dash four twenty-nine point one temporary uses for shipping containers. And the interpretation of the gentleman that worked the zoning department was not the interpretation we thought the legislation wanted to express when they put the words down on that particular grid and defined shipping container uses. They spoke of it as garbage containers or storage containers. Where we were just trying to use them for the foundation of building a structure that changes the look. And we just wanted to bring it before you because we didn't feel like it was fair for him to take that interpretation and not bring it before you to see what the real interpretation should have been. So, we wanted to pass this out to you and let you decide. So, thank you very much. You're on mine.
Thank you.
I tried to share a packet and a picture. But you can let the public see it, both sides. Anybody, if they want to see, there's plenty of exotic structures that changes the look of a neighborhood, you know. And it's, and, and you can see this eco-friendly. They're very strong structures. People were using them as bunkers or trying to use them as bunkers, so they, they should be long-lasting then.
So, Mr. Horton, if I may, you were attempting to put one of these on?
And well, I have a commercial property. I was trying to, you know, in the city, I love this city. And they don't have twenty-four hour spots except for Denny's, IHOP, and Waffle House. So, I wanted to put a mobile app, bring a little bit of California here. I'm not from California, I'm from DC. The DC surrounding area, Arlington. And I wanted to bring forth what I've seen in California a lot. They got mobile app. You can just, twenty-four hours a day, mobile app. Might have five, six restaurants and one establishment. Nobody's eating there. You get your food out of cubby, DoorDash. Twenty-four hours a day, you get a great selection of food. So, what, um, what I wanted to do with my property was bring twenty-four mobile, twenty-four hour mobile app. And the way that I wanted my structure to work was right here. And I wanted to change the look of southeast. Southeast has no barber shops. Southeast has no nail salons. And I wanted to, with my commercial property, make my plaza accessible to everyone. Change, change the, the safety because it's very unsafe right there. And the cops do a great job. I see they patrol, they run people away. But the mission's right, right there. And I wanted to have my halfway house, I have a house right behind it. And we're, we've been partnering with Unified Construction for a while. And we've been trying to make opportunities for people transitioning at home from prison and be able to give them a way to step into community and also help build the infrastructure of the community. And with that, you know, we, we wanted to introduce shipping containers. It was more cost-effective for me, to be honest with you.
What, with one of these containers?
Yes, that's about three, six, that's about nine, almost nine. Maybe about eight or nine containers to build that right there.
Yeah, because I've seen them as homes in other cities. But I was trying to figure out what you were talking about.
See, the definition for us here, there is being interpreted differently in the zoning department. When I, when I tried to get my permits, they told me that that's only for temporary uses. It's under temporary uses. It's not being used as infrastructures or structures to, to build beyond what, what mobile homes or containers, shipping containers or garbage containers entail. So, I wanted to see what the legislation wanted to express when they wrote that. Because I felt like they didn't just, they didn't look or they didn't think beyond.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm sure that they did, beyond everything. But we're not looking at what they've said as, as what they wanted to express. We're looking at it differently.
Does it look like this?
Definitely that or even more exotic, yes.
Well, I, from what I'm hearing, there are a number of facets to this. So, it's hard for me to know without, you know, hearing from planning or the, and I'm sure our interim city manager can look into the, all of this. But conceptually, I think this is awesome. If there's stuff we need to change in terms of code or if there's things we need to advocate for legislatively from the state, then that's important for us. I will say that my hometown of Wichita, Kansas, in a certain block, they have probably ten to twelve of these that they've turned into a retail, mixed retail, salon, coffee shop, some retail shops. They've, in the center is kind of a courtyard where they have a fire pit and live.
Which is really nice.
Live music. So, this concept, as, as Councilman White Boyd said, is not new, but it would be new to Roanoke. So, I, I think for us to know, like, what we need to do, what's.
It's just the, the interpretation of the fellow in the zoning department.
Well, that's, and that's where the referral to our city manager can help us take a look at that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
It's been quite a pleasure.
Thank you for sharing photos. Thank you. Yeah, this is going to be my retirement home.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Madam City Manager. My name is Alan Henry, and I've lived in the city of Roanoke for forty years. I'm also a member of Pedalsafe ROA, which is a local cycling advocacy organization. A few years ago, I began to develop a personal climate action plan by trying to replace shorter trips to places like grocery stores, healthcare offices, the gym, et cetera, with walking or biking instead of driving. I soon found that the place that I go frequently, a grocery store a little over a half mile from my house, is unsafe to travel to because of the design of the roadway. A four-lane road with no bike lane, a busy intersection with no pedestrian or bicycle crossing lights, and fast-moving motor vehicles. My wife asked me not to ride my bike there, and I agreed. So, I drive my car a little over a mile round trip to buy milk and eggs. In two thousand and seven, two very significant advances happened in the city of Roanoke. The first iPhone went on sale, and the city of Roanoke was the first city to adopt its own street design guidelines and complete streets policy. We are now on iPhone Edition fifteen, Street Design Guideline One. I'm here to request, to request that when you develop your next strategic plan at your September twenty-fourth, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth meeting, that you include a targeted action for updating the street design guidelines and complete streets policy. Updating the street design guidelines has been a goal of the comprehensive plan since the year 2020, but has not yet been addressed. Since 2007, new state and federally approved engineering guidance, techniques, and standards for safer urban streets for cyclists and all users have been developed and are being applied in cities across the country. For instance, by adopting the street design guidelines of the National Association of City Transportation Officials, or NACTO. The current guidelines do not include any guidance for such critical safety improvements like protected bike lanes, which are essential both for safety and for getting more people to choose cycling over cars for some of their trips. NACTO guidelines provide such guidance to traffic planners. And Pedalsafe would like to request the city adopt the NACTO guidelines as, as the default guideline for street design in Roanoke. Pedalsafe members have a wealth of experience and information about safe streets and would be happy to assist and join you in this effort by participating in any advisory committees and public engagement. Thank you for the opportunity to present this request. And we look forward to working with you and your talented staff to update these guidelines and policies. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next two speakers, Darnell Wood, Jimmy Russell.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, members of city council, and Dr. Patton. Long story short, I was asked to be on the youth athletic review board back in 2021. Selected, our first meeting was held in February 2022. Much to my surprise, I was at a baseball youth game at Virginia State University in Petersburg on Thursday and received a phone call from a reporter saying, I'd like to have your comments about the youth athletic review board being abolished. I was shocked. I was shocked that I would get that information from someone, from a newspaper. I did my due diligence. We on the board do our due diligence once every month. I have not missed but one meeting. During this time, we didn't have a Department of Parks or Recreation Director for quite some time. Also, during this time, there was a vacancy on the board which was not filled for quite some time. We recently just had two new members added to the board. Jimmy and also Ms. Pat Sheehy, which is in the school system. And for me to find this information out. The youth in Roanoke need more than what just the youth athletic review board looking over. If you see the things going on in Roanoke, there's many, many, many youth in Roanoke that are not being, given the opportunity to play youth sports in Roanoke. It's not like it was when I was coming up. I will ask that you please review what you have to do. Don't take this review board and stick with somebody else. Because right now, the people that's on this review board are passionate about the children in Roanoke City and their youth sports. If you go to any high school football game, you can see why we are not having the numbers in youth sports when you look at the sidelines in high school. Why does William Fleming just have forty kids on a football field? Why does Patrick Henry probably have sixty to seventy? It's all about what's given them at an early age. And I will ask, please reconsider whatever you do. I took this passionate, all of us are volunteers. I'm passionate about the kids in Roanoke, and I'm sure you are as well. But please, when I got that information, I called in as soon as I got by. I even called Ms. Moon Reynolds while she was on vacation, because I wanted an explanation. And for us not to be given that, I tell you, it's kind of disheartening, especially for me. Because I beat the pavement every day in the city of Roanoke. No matter what it is, gun violence prevention or whatever, I beat the pavement. I see the kids. But for you, but for me to hear that information, I tell you, it was quite disheartening. I see the little yellow light there, so I'm going to finish. But please reconsider that portion. Because what we do is essential to getting these kids back into youth sports, keeping them out of trouble, and giving them something to do. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, they might not have heard what happened this morning, that it's being taken under consideration. I've talked with Mr. Russell a little bit, let him know that we've got some time to work with them. And if, if council would permit, part of that presentation is working with staff and with these individuals to come up with a solution that addresses the needs of our youth sports while still looking for the efficiencies that council had hoped to achieve by combining some of the needs into the, into the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. So, if we can work with everyone, I think we can find a win-win solution.
Yes, sir. And, and we're going to look at that very closely. So, well, thank you for your commitment and your commitment to youth sports. It's important to us. And, and let me say, this is something that this council, for years, have tried to figure out and work out. But the main thing that we want to keep up in the forefront is our youth, that our young people. And, you know, being around athletics as I am now, not as much as I used to, but during the time, you know, it was, it was just frustrating to see the things that happened. And as we compete against other schools and other leagues and the county for the most part. And we have numbers that seem to tail off. And it shouldn't be, shouldn't be that way. So, it's something internally that we have to work on. But we're doing that, as Mr. Spencer said. We didn't make any decisions on anything. We're going to work with to try to put everything together. But I want you to, you've done a lot of work in this area. You've been doing a lot of things. I appreciate your commitment because I see you on a lot of things that involve young people in this community. So, hold on. Don't make any of the decisions yet. We, we're going to work through this because it's so important. Because we're going to do it for our kids. We have to do it for our kids. And, and, and we got to thank youth sports. And I sometimes get caught up in saying, I'm hearing a lot of things, but listen about youth sports and how we compete and put kids on the field to play. in all the sports, basketball, football, or whatever. Matter of fact, I wish it was more in baseball, get some more in that, but that's, that's another story. But thank you all for your commitment, and, and we'll, we appreciate what's going on, and we'll be analyzing everything to make sure we do what's best for our children.
And I'm gonna let Jimmy. I don't want to steal anything. I'm gonna let Jimmy talk.
I think I better change this topic.
Oh, Joe, hold on. Vice Mayor has a comment he wants to make.
I was just gonna say, you should not have heard about this through the media.
That's exactly what I said.
Um, we've, we've, we've got to do better, especially if we're talking about a board that we appoint. And if this kind of consideration is underway, anyone involved should be notified, um, you know, prior to any conversation about it. So I apologize for, that you were not notified, and, um, because we, we do appreciate what you do, and no decision has been made yet. So I appreciate your input, too.
Yeah, we appreciate you saying that. I didn't know it was gonna work out this way, where I could kind of just build on what Darnell was saying, because he said a lot of great things, and so have you all. I'm, I'm a father of three. My name is Jimmy Russell, yard board member. I, I've coached multiple sports throughout my kids. I've got three boys. My oldest one's fifteen, just starting at Patrick Henry this year. Coaching two football teams this year. This is not about what happens on that field, y'all. And, and, you know, we're talking about the numbers of participants that we have and wanting to put a good product out on the field. Yes, that's important, but there's a lot of things that come under the purview of everybody in this room. The ones that are wearing uniforms back here, the stuff that you all deal with every day, that we can, if we have a strong youth sports program in this city, we can make all of that much, much easier. Now, it won't be tomorrow that it becomes easier. It'll be ten to fifteen years from now, it'll get easier. But, you know, just, and I don't know what's being discussed, but if we're talking about taking this board and moving it and making it part of the Parks and Recreation Board, the problem with youth sports, in my opinion, is that it's just a part of youth. It's just a part of Parks and Recreation, okay? It doesn't get enough attention. It, it needs its own attention. It can't be just a part of something else. It has to be something that affects, it affects the police department, it affects the schools, it affects so much in the city. We need to take it and make it its own thing. And just putting this with another board is just more of the same, making youth sports somewhat of an afterthought. And I'm not saying that anybody in this room wants it to be that, but that's what it's become. We don't spend enough time. We don't pay enough attention to it. We don't put enough resources into it. And there's been a lot of really good things that have came out in these meetings over the last two to three months. There's some really good seeds that have been planted. And I would hate to see the, that those seeds don't get to come to fruition, because we, we're hasty in decisions. And I don't know what goes into this decision and why we're even discussing it. But youth sports deserves more than just saying, "Out of efficiency or out of convenience, we're gonna do something different." My vision is that the potential for youth sports to change lives can be realized, and it should. These kids and these programs, they will change this community. Without oversight, though, I fear that we'll take the path of least resistance, and those that will suffer are the youth of today that could be the hope for the future of this city. And if we really focus in on the youth of this city, ten to fifteen years from now, we'll look back on it and see that it was a great investment. But if we decide to do something different, we're gonna be regretful, and we'll wonder what if. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next two speakers, Brian McConnell, Shelley Himmel.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lee, council members. I'm Dr. Patton. I wish that circumstances were different than they are, that I find myself before you today. Uh, as, however, as a Roanoke citizen over the last sixteen years, I'd like to take a couple of minutes to share a recent incident involving the Section Eight building in which I've lived over the last ten years. On July twenty-fourth, I had a pre-scheduled meeting with my building's manager as she attempted to explain the meeting's purpose to me. And after a few minutes, she became frustrated and demanded I leave her office. As a result of that, and later that same afternoon, it was a mid-morning meeting, I returned home and found in the drop box outside my door a material non-compliance notice specifying breaches to be remedied within twenty-one days. The remedy is really straightforward enough. For the next twenty-one days from the date of this notice thereafter, you are to treat staff with respect. This is your, in all cats, final warning. There had not been a previous warning, nor in the ten years that I've been in the building, through a string of about five or six property managers in the building ever had any disciplinary action taken against me. I think this is a little heavy-handed, but it got my attention. I ended up meeting, there are six points here. I don't have to go into a lot of detail. But not following them to the T effectively lays the groundwork for initiating an eviction against me. I've been fortunate to this point, quite frankly, as recently as Friday, secured legal advisement in this situation. But I just wanted to share it with you, quite frankly, to let you know that for someone like myself, this is my experience. I can't get my head around it. I don't understand it. But, but I, I see it as Roanoke's underbelly, quite frankly. I have a lot of psychological training and background in this, and, and I assure you, I'm gonna be very, very competent in the way that I'm approaching and dealing with this situation. But this is the day-to-day stuff that is going on in the community, right in the heart of the community. Thanks for your time. Wish I were a little more upbeat, but I appreciate all of you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Shelley Himmel. I'm here to speak because I was troubled to note, uh, through a third-party contact, that the Van Blarecoms, parties to whom you gave a tract of parkland last year in exchange for presumably their promised build a coffee shop, that the Van Blarecoms have now been given again another extension on their contract, this one for eighteen months. The fact that they've already been given this, uh, extension is water under the bridge. I can't do anything about it. I would have spoken against it publicly had I had any notice that they were applying for it. But, uh, I will content myself with pointing out that the city should have, if it was actually complying with its duty to protect the taxpayers, should have demanded and made collection efforts to retrieve the construction liquidated damages that are due to the city for the Van Blarecoms' failure, excused or unexcused. There's, there's actually no provision in the contract that, and since the deed incorporates the contract, there's no provision in the contract that allows any excuse for failure to collect or pay the construction liquidated damages. That's thirty, oh, that's sorry, three thousand dollars a month. And just wanted to point out that that does add up. They're already into the city for about six months' worth of time in which they haven't complied with their contract, and they will be on the hook for another eighteen months. If the city has actually made a demand on the Van Blarecoms or achieved payment from them, I'm certainly unaware of it. But you gave away five hundred thousand dollars' worth of property to these people. You ought to at least be trying to retrieve something from the situation. It's the only remedy you left yourselves under the contract, and you ought to be trying to exercise it.
No, I was just asking Mayor Lee if we could have our, our attorney, because I'm not sure if this interim city manager's abreast of the extenuating circumstances or somebody. I just hate for information like that to go out to the public and not be addressed correctly. Is there anyone that can address that for us?
I'll be glad to, first of all, the Van Blarecoms.
The extenuating circumstances. Yeah, the extenuating circumstances.
There are extenuating circumstances. First, there's no breach contract that would, in my opinion, trigger liquidated damages at this point. Secondly, we did have extenuating circumstances. Number one is that the structure is constructed in a way that's most similar to log cabins. Therefore, to get the proper contractor in place took some time, so there was a need for additional time. Number two, since largely this is being done using historic tax credits, the timeliness of that required additional time. And finally, quite frankly, the project's been held up because of litigation. That litigation that was properly heard by the Circuit Court and won by the city has been appealed to the Court of Appeals and is pending there. Again, appears to be an attempt to delay matters and prevent this project from moving forward, even though a majority of the neighborhood supports this project. So with all those things in, taken into consideration, an extension was given. And that was last meeting or a couple of meetings ago. And the deed has been recorded, and the changes acknowledged. So currently, Van Blarecoms or Fishburne Perk LLC, who is the owner of the property, is in compliance with the contract.
Thank you.
May I have your response? Because statements that may not be correct.
All right.
The next two speakers, Reverend David Denham and Frida Cathcart.
All right, do you think, Tim?
Local minister, Tree of Life Church, Church of Good Troublemakers. And I have to say, your facts are not correct. And for the interim city manager, it's important for you to know the historical trace of all this. At the beginning of all this, over two hundred neighbors within two blocks of the house signed a petition opposing the sale. That's two hundred in a very small area. A total of over one thousand people signed the petition as well. Lawyers, investors, urban planners, and contractors warned the city that the Van Blarecoms didn't appear to have the resources or the knowledge to be successful in restoring. I remember Ms. Blarecombe one day when I was coming back, walking my dog through the park, through this great neighborhood, and she was being interviewed by the local TV station. And they were asking her, "Well, what about the neighbors?" And she says, "Oh, everyone supports this." Fortunately, I was walking by right at that time. I raised my hand. I said, "That's not correct." And she looked at me, and I said, "I'm worried, because I think this is just a matter of profit for you." And guess what? Big, big smile came after that. And from that, my point on, my total trust both down there. But anyway, they had a community engagement meeting early on and made promises to the neighborhood that there would be electric hookups for vendor trucks instead of gas generators. The shaved ice truck that's there now uses a gas generator. That they wouldn't cut down trees around the house. Instead of cutting down the dead dangerous tree, they cut down a healthy tree near the house that fed birds and its berries. Fishburne Park is known as a bird sanctuary. They promised the neighborhood that they would be involved with the development of their plans. It didn't follow up to or involve the neighborhood with their plans. There's been no involvement since, only, mm, in the end, those two neighbors about lawsuits and that kind of thing. This is not how you build a constituency to bring back, bring back change in a neighborhood. And this is an historic cottage, and it would be a great opportunity. And I know how many of us talked about the networks that we all had, and that we would be able to organize a network that would make that area very, very special and for us not to be dealing with the contention that we are right now. Thank you. And by the way, the Roanoke Black Cardinals, most people do not know about them. And if you'd like to honor the history of being a part of the Negro League's right here in Roanoke, let me know, because you all can be a part of Black History Month next year, and then we'll do a big event out at the ballpark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Frida Cathcart. I'm a district director representing Roanoke City as an elected official on the Blue Ridge Soil and Water Conservation Board. Last year around this time, I told you about a grant opportunity that I thought would help Roanoke. And that brought back, um, the city did pursue that, brought back three million dollars to the city to help with stormwater. Today, I bring you exciting news about an even bigger opportunity, the Community Change Grants. And, um, there's different strategies. The government has allocated two billion dollars to help address environmental and climate justice. This is to go to underserved communities and to help empower them and to deal with climate change problems. Studies have revealed that marginalized communities are more likely to suffer the devastating effects of climate change more than the rest of the population. So it is right and just to pursue bringing solutions to this population as quickly as possible. I work hard on behalf of the people of Roanoke to spread the word about what our needs are when I go to meetings, when I'm on conference calls. I'm just always talking about the problems facing us, the heat island effect, flood resiliency, just beating the bushes, trying to see if I can find solutions to help us here. I was at a conference at the end of June when the senior program manager of the program approached me, sought me out, and said, "I think Roanoke is perfect for this opportunity." And I agree. A year ago, I had mentioned the dream of mine, vision, to bring Climate Conservation Corps to Roanoke to help with our tree canopy. We are losing our tree canopy, and it's really important. It's like somebody read my mind, or I'm not such a big thinker. But they have sensed, um, the federal government has launched a program to have an American Climate Corps. And President Joe Biden said, "This is a case where conscious and convenience cross paths. We're dealing with this existential threat to the planet, and increasing our economic growth and prosperity are one and the same." When I think of climate change, I think of jobs. These are important jobs that we can bring back to help the people, our youth, to learn skills. Recently, I spent over nineteen hundred dollars on tree work around my property. And I think about how easy it is, because my neighbor cut down, dropped three trees, three healthy trees were just taken out. Lots of times, people have trouble paying for the work to maintain their trees. But we could create jobs here. We could bring federal money here to create jobs to help people that may have trouble affording to protect our tree canopy so that they can do... do the work to get the benefits from it. Anyhow, I look forward to following up with the city manager and Leanne Wetsonfeld. The deadline is August 16th. Sorry about that. Sometimes these things are tight turnarounds. But I think if we work together as a team, we can bring the money home and do some really exciting things for Roanoke. So I wanted to share this with you, and let's go. I am so sorry. Owen asked me, he had technical problems where he was trying to sign up online. By the time he got here, they had stopped taking signups to speak, and he had really wanted to address you. If you have a few moments for him to come up and speak, it would mean a lot.
Did you understand that, Mayor?
No.
What is he saying? Apparently Owen McGuire wanted to speak, but he missed the signup deadline.
Hold on, you didn't sign up?
Tried to online, but wasn't able to because of technical problems.
I can't, I can't understand what you're saying.
She said he couldn't sign up because of technical issues.
He knew he was barely going to get here by 2:00 o'clock, so he tried to sign up online, but it didn't work for him, and so he tried. I hate to see him being disenfranchised because of technical issues.
All right, well, I'm gonna equal, I give everybody a shot to go ahead, come on and sign. I think I know where you're going, but come on and sign up. Come on, speak, brother.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry for the glitch on my sign up, but thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I know it's been a full day for you. My name's Owen McGuire, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. I'm here to speak to you today about the Planning Commission's proposal on the zoning amendments. I know you were working on that all morning and have been working hard on it for the last few months. I'm sure I speak for a great number of Roanoke landowners who are very concerned with these amendments. Regardless of what the Planning Commission has said, most homeowners I talk to believe their property values could be very negatively affected by these amendments if they're allowed to stand, not to mention the property enjoyment values. These amendments would make it easy for shady developers to come into our single-family neighborhoods and pack them with cheap multi-unit dwellings. When people in Roanoke City purchased their single-family home, it's because it's what they wanted, not an apartment, not a trailer, or other accommodations. They wanted a home with a yard, with neighbors with similar settings. They did not want to have, to worry about their property enjoyment value being threatened by a high-rise apartment going in next door. The Planning Commission in its report on the amendments listed a number of venues they use for community engagement. However, there's no mention of polling or canvassing of actual single-family housing property owners, how they feel about it, these amendments. These people pay a great deal of money every year as in real estate taxes, just to keep the city running. Why don't they want to know what these homeowners think about the amendments? These amendments give carte blanche to just about anybody to do anything on private residential property. So I hope you will consider this, rescind these draconian and outrageous amendments and continue to protect the property owners in Roanoke City. Thank you for your time.
Let me ask you something. Have you ever been to any of the meetings that were held in the neighborhoods about the zoning amendments?
No, I've never, I was never able to make one of them. And furthermore, I did rarely heard of them. I don't know how they contacted people about the meetings.
Very thoroughly.
Have you all had replies from cities, people who own property in the city?
Yes, sir.
Uh huh.
Yep.
Okay. I can't imagine why.
We'll do that again.
Sir?
Excuse me, Mayor, I shouldn't be talking. We'll do it again before we adopt it, so you'll have your chance.
Okay, all right. I just hope everybody speaks up about it, because I'm frankly very worried about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no other speakers.
Well, that concludes the speaker's, okay. All right, that concludes the hearing of citizens upon public matters. We'll now move down to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered by routine, to be routine by members of city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. I need a motion on approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Mr. Ballison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the consent agenda is approved. Thank you. All right, we go to item number five, which is the public hearing. We have none. Petitions and communications, we have none. And now we have, item seven, is reports of city officers and the interim city manager. I'm pleased to recognize Dr. Patton, our interim city manager, for briefings that she may have.
Mayor Mike, Vice Mayor, members of council, I'd like to call Mr. Doug Jackson forward, who will present on the arts and culture. He's the arts and culture coordinator, but he will give an overview of the work of the
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, members of council, Dr. Patton, thank you for letting me take the time today to update you on the work of the Roanoke Arts Commission and arts and culture. We come every August to share with you what we did over the past year and what we want to do this year, and ask you if you have any questions or any guidance for us, so that we're all on the same page. You've been given a 40-page annual report highlighting what we've done this year. I'm not going to go through all 40 pages of it, but I do want to share kind of the spirit of it. And we will, as we, yeah, also share the 2025 work plan, which we're pretty excited about. First, let me thank you for the care that you give in appointing the members of the Roanoke Arts Commission. These are 15 volunteer members who do a lot of work, and they're very engaged. And I want to make note that last year, we inventoried how much volunteer time they spent, and they spent over 1,000 hours of volunteer time. And we track the arts and cultural organizations, the nonprofit organizations, and this is higher than most of the organizations we have in the community. So they take the role very seriously. And it really starts with our, well, let me also acknowledge that we lost this year Helen Dean, and Helen led the way in advocating for our community, in advocating for arts and culture, and especially in championing investments for our young people in the community. We already miss her greatly. The spirit of this is really about a sense of belonging and a sense of community. So you would expect me to come up and show you lots of pictures of art on a wall and sculptures, but I'm afraid there are going to be more pictures of people, and that's what we're really focused on. And it starts with our committees. In addition to the Roanoke Arts Commission, which is appointed by council, we also have committees that members of the community can participate in. So our four committees, we start with the collections committee, which takes care of the public art collection. We also have the placemaking committee, which focuses on advance, helping neighbors advance projects in their neighborhood to improve the place. Planning is really about helping advance City Plan 2040. We just happen to be doing it through art. And then we have the funding committee that is appointed, members of the appointed commission, and they oversee the really robust process in which they come and provide recommendations to council on funding for arts and cultural organizations in the community. In 2024, I'm really, really happy to say that we have been just running hard, working hard, and we accomplished the goals that we set out for ourselves. Everything has been done, except for a few mural projects that if you drive around town now, you might see on the side of the Gainsborough YMCA, on the side of the West End Center, and on the Greenway at Walnut Street Bridge. That budget was $182,000 out of the percent for art fund. With that, we're committed to applying for every NEA grant cycle we can. And so we partnered that with $139,000 of NEA grant funds and additional match funds. So that's a pretty substantial budget, and nearly 90% of that went to local artists in our community. These are individual entrepreneurs running their own little small business, and so we're putting them to work. Additionally, that other $40,000 often went to small businesses in the community as we bought supplies to do projects. So I'm going to share a little bit about some of what we did this year, but first, let me tell you about the year ahead. It's really much more of the same, because we feel like we're on a really good path in doing public art, but it's very, very focused on the community, engaging the community and advancing community goals. So this year, we are going to grow it, we're using $320,000 from the percent for art fund. That includes $50,000, which we budget for maintenance. That's kind of a very responsible thing we should do. We set that aside within our budget and say, let's take care of what we've got. Then additionally, it leaves $53,000 that we can roll over to next year, so we're not even spending all of the money in the account. And with that, with those funds, we're going to change out the Elmwood Art Walk. We're going to do another show in the municipal building, which is really about community connection. We're going to put artists to work with Parks and Recreation, in advancing art in neighborhood parks. And one of those, we're going to be doing a project that's part of the Eureka Park Community Center, as that's redone. Additionally, in downtown Roanoke, we're developing new strategies to use the arts to foster even additional vibrancy in downtown Roanoke. And we're going to continue our Artist Action Grants, which are mini-grants that we give artists when they tell us about a project they want to do that advances justice, wellness, and inclusion in the community. So along with that $320,000, we have $255,000 in grant funds and match, and all of these dollars have already been approved by council. So that's about $570,000 that we're working with this year. And the strategy, I should say, is, you know, it is, it's about community, it's about individuals, it's about the fact that every one of us in our community are creative. And we can align that creativity with making this the best place possible. So as we hire artists and residents, and we're going to have 22 artists and residents this year working alongside the city, engaging in neighborhoods, in advancing projects, as we do that, they are modeling the way. So it's not just, it's not just artists, but, you know, artists know how to take risk, that's part of their nature, and they also have a creative process that they've honed. So we're saying to them, hey, help us, show us what your creative process is. Let's try and do things a little bit differently. So people have really responded to murals. And we may not always be in the mural business, but we're having a lot of fun and really seeing the impacts of it now. So expect to see some more murals this year. Two of artists and residents are muralists and residents, where their job is not to paint the murals, but their job is to help emerging artists take their first step in painting a mural. And the West End Center, Ray Troyan Morse, it's her first mural that she's working on right now, and our artist and resident has been able to coach her into that position. We're going to continue with Arts Connect Neighbors, free activities that any neighborhood, any group of neighbors, they don't even have to be an organized neighborhood, a group of neighbors can get together and say, hey, we want to have a puppet show, we want to have a Latin dance night, we want to have a poetry workshop with our neighbors to get to know each other better and reconnect after the pandemic. We've got, I think nine activities happening tomorrow night, which is National Night Out, and we hope to see everybody out at National Night Out tomorrow night. But we have funded 40 activities in 19 different neighborhoods, that's all across the city. And so we're going to continue doing this work. And these are local artists who have said, hey, you know what? I know how to sit down with young people and, or older people, and paint kindness stones that we can leave around the neighborhood for kids as they're going to the bus shelter. This is art, but it's connection as well. And then the Daisy Art Parade, again, it's art, but it's connection. We had 400 people last year who participated in the Daisy Art Parade, made art together, and then we got out there and celebrated each other. We had four Northwest Neighborhoods participate in this. And the idea is that on April 12th of next year, we're going to be out there cheering on each other as neighborhoods, because we're going to be focusing on the emerging neighborhood centers from the council-approved neighborhood centers' vision plan. And we're going to be doing activities this year, so events happening in Melrose Plaza on 11th Street Northwest, in West End on 9th Street Southeast. And then, it's not just people who are directly involved with the Roanoke Arts Commission, it's, we really hope that we're touching many, many, many layers of the community. One of the layers that we've worked with for a long time are the existing arts and cultural organizations in the community, and we bring them together along with the Roanoke Cultural Endowment every two months, and we're developing strategies across the organizations. And one of those is this very basic message about creativity and who we are in Roanoke as a community. And we are saying, like we said downstairs on the first floor, with the It's Here Show around the arts, entrepreneurship, and placemaking, that it's right here in Roanoke where we are creating every day the place we want to be. It's right here in Roanoke that we welcome investment, and we welcome dreams, and we want to help you pursue yours. So expect this year to hear that message out there. Additionally, it's time for us to do a new arts and cultural plan. So in January of '25, we're really going to kick that off. We're going to do some survey work this fall to get ready for it. But expect more collaboration, a strong collaboration, and everyone just rallying around this idea of creativity, investing, and making this, continuing to make this a wonderful place to live and to work and to create art. And I just want to ask if you have any questions or if you have any guidance for us, but most importantly, most importantly, I want to thank you for the support. We see you out there at events. We talk to you all the time. We really appreciate the heart that you bring to the work that we're doing, and that's modeling the way for others. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Doug, thank you. I just wanted to highlight a couple things. First of all, for folks who may not have seen it, I think a new mural downtown, you can see, I can't remember which building it's on, but it's the train.
Alcova Mortgage.
It's absolutely beautiful. You can see it from Williamson Road and Church, so I encourage you to take a look at that. Do you have any updates for us on art space? And I know they did an extensive study here related to affordable housing and studio space at Riverdale, potentially for artists. Is there any update on that?
Well, there is an update. You know, we did both a preliminary feasibility study with art space out of Minneapolis, and this is a model that they've done in 23 different states. It was started by the city of Minneapolis in the 70s as a way to get ahead of housing costs for the creative sector. And they, so with the preliminary feasibility study, they came back and did a market study, and these are on our website. They're really, they make you really proud of our community and the building blocks that we have in the community. Members from the art space team will be back in town this month, and so they still are focused on Riverdale and the kind of spectacular opportunity that that provides. And they're going to be looking at specific structures, you know, coming to visit, they've been here twice now, I think. But when you're looking at property and everything that goes into rehabilitating, creating a new purpose from one of these historic properties, it takes a lot of visits. So we're going to welcome them back into the community.
Well, and I also wanted to commend you all and everyone who supported BUSK Roanoke, the little festival that was held recently, and street performance art. Traveling abroad this summer, I saw it everywhere, and to know that And to know that we're making space for that in Roanoke is really exciting. And Jefferson Rose, who kind of initiated that whole idea, I know he was just over the moon with gratitude for the opportunity.
And we really believe that's where we need to invest, right? We've got citizens in the community with talent, skills, ideas. How do we help them take the next step with it? And Busk Roanoke, we did it over one weekend, and we encouraged people who have never performed in public before to do caricatures or juggle or whatever their talent is. There was a young woman down there singing Appalachian folk songs on Sunday morning. And it was really lovely. And it's just the start. Working with Tina Workman at Downtown Roanoke Incorporated. And on August 15th, we have the next National Endowment for the Arts Our Town Grant application due. And that's when I said we're focusing on downtown vitality. Can we create a structure that makes it easy for people to perform in our park spaces downtown on privately, publicly accessible private spaces on the streets? Are there ways that we could encourage that, put some resources to it, and experiment together?
Thank you.
Oh, nothing. I was just going to say, every city needs a Doug Jackson, and I'm glad that we have one.
The main message is that it is such a big team of people, and it is, it's partners all through here. And I do, but I am incredibly grateful for the opportunity to do this work because, you know, I've been here 20 years this summer, which is kind of amazing. But my, another job has always kept me kind of working in other parts of Virginia. The relationships that we're building, I just feel like I belong here so much more by getting involved. And we want people to feel that through the arts.
I know. People don't realize you actually do have another job at your actual job, but what you do for us is just amazing. And I know we have to be really grateful, and your team. I know there are other folks working with you, but Doug, you do so much behind the scenes. I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Doug, I want to thank you as well. I go down Reserve fairly frequently and to see what we placed, pretty bad stuff on the side of the bridge going to Carillion with that incredibly beautiful mural makes all the difference in the world to those of us who go by places like that. And I know the same thing had happened on Bridge Street, you know. But one thought I had, I saw the 1218 mural in the paper. Most people don't know, but 1218 was the Cadillac of the Norfolk and Western's fleet, not 611. 611 was a special passenger locomotive. It's really neat to see part of the history related back to who we are today. My only suggestion, and I did talk to Tina about this, there should be something there that either talks about the significance of that locomotive, but more importantly, tells people they can see the real thing at the Virginia Museum of Transportation, and that's not there. So not only do we have a beautiful piece of art, but you can go see the real thing. That usually doesn't happen when you see art. So if you all could find a way to double team it, that would be fantastic.
I'm so glad you made that comment. This summer, our HR team has a fantastic internship program at the city. And we had an intern this summer who has inventoried murals. We have an online space now that we're polishing up. But we, and then the next step is to put tags on each of the murals that are consistent across the community, whether we're full funding or if we're just a partner or if we're just supportive of it, where you can do the QR code and go and get interviews. You can find out more information, all of that. So we're working toward that.
And for those of us who don't always know how to use QR codes, something a little more simple, plus the QR code.
Good old fashion sentence.
Hey, Doug, I just want to say thank you, especially for the Daisy Art Parade. I cannot say enough about the parade. I was just blown away by the number of people from, participants from Northwest, children, adults. It was great. And I was hesitating about participating because I'm not really artsy, but you don't need to be. So I'm looking forward to next year's parade. So thank you to you and your staff.
And to Brian Kuhnahan, he's another one who, he had the idea, and he's a citizen in the community, resident in the community, and said, okay, now how do we partner with you and support you and help that grow?
Now you have a grand market.
Excellent. Well, yeah, and you don't have to have art experience. You have to have a, you know, you have to come with a sense of love and joy and celebration.
I have my theme already for next year. It's Vivian and her chili peppers.
Oh, I could see him now.
Mr. Mayor, since everyone else had a little say, I have to say mine now. I've been knowing you for the 20 years, and I want to say you have definitely brought the arts to Roanoke to another level. I used to talk to you often when I would come back in town, especially about the murals. I was always, always looking at murals outside the city. And you have definitely done that here. As Bill spoke about Reserve and the mirror there, I still have to talk about the one over in Gainesboro when we talk about history. We could talk about the one with the Gainesboro Garage, the one you did with the David Ramey. And also, since we adopted the Gainesboro Hub Plan, I'm hoping that we will be able to find some buildings over there that we can continue to bring that history alive that once was in Gainesboro.
And thank you for that comment. And, you know, this art activation, it's also about new businesses, creative businesses, the spirit that we can do it, that we can find a vacant building and bring it back to life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council in closing. Mr. Jackson is a jewel. A jewel that most cities across the Commonwealth and this nation are not blessed to have. And just meeting with him and learning about the many things that you all are doing within the community, when he shared with me, and it was shared with me maybe a month ago, that two neighborhoods can come together and want to have, I mean, it's a plethora of things they could wish for that's on the list. And then I asked, well, who paid? No, I said, well, how do they pay for it? And it was shared, it's through a grant. They can come up with dancing or whatever they want to do. What you all are doing here in Roanoke is not being done across this nation. And sometimes you're so close to it, you cannot see it. But as an outsider who feels that I'm now a member of the Roanoke family, it's amazing. That's why you are an eighth-time All-American City. And every time we can state that, it shows why you are. I'm just pleased and honored to be just a little part of what the many things you've done over the years. Congratulations, Mr. Jackson. Your work is phenomenal.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, ma'am. Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, I'm going to ask Mr. Wayne Farley, our fleet manager, to come forward to make a presentation on fleet service overview. The presentation was made to me, and immediately when I recognized all of the information that was contained within, I stated to him, I would like for you to make this presentation to council. In this presentation, there is a part that is very important that we are looking out four, five years as it comes to leasing fire engines and the issues, not only across this nation, but internationally with being able to buy fire engines. So we are forward-thinking, looking out. So in this presentation, there will be an area which addresses this issue. Mr. Farley.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, and members of city council, I'd like to address a few things as she stated. Talking about leasing of vehicles, wanted to give you just a little context to the size of the fleet that we have here in Roanoke. We have about 972 assets that we operate across the city every day. 672 of those assets are people movers. Some of these are trailers and other types of equipment. And we operate to serve the citizens with every day. The back office support for that is 26 technicians, three supervisors, three office staff, six contractors, and then myself as the manager. Our current projects and goals, we are working this year to try to move to leasing vehicles rather than capital purchase of vehicles. We can extend our dollars a little bit further, and it'll come very evident here in just a minute, so I apologize for getting there slowly. But in 2025, we're also looking to reduce 10% of our underutilized fleet. And that is a result of the implementation of telematics and GPS that we put on the assets to track them, to see what the utilization has been on those assets and what department, and trying to maximize that. Some of that's due to some staffing control, you know, lack of staffing and things of that sort. But we're trying to get to the root of that and make sure that we can at least get 10% of those underutilized vehicles out of the hands of the operators. One thing we've done over the past minute was to start renting snow trucks. We've had a number of 20 to 22 snow trucks that the fleet operates in the total number of 80 trucks that we do to remove snow around the city. Last year, we did an experiment with nine of those vehicles because they were beyond their useful life of repair. And we went with a rental truck and conversion. It's something that VDOT is doing and something that they're doing in the city of Richmond. We adopted it here and it was successful with those first nine, so we're going to expand that to 22 trucks this year. And it's going to reduce about $2 million of pressure on our spend to have to replace those trucks. And the cost of those 22 trucks would be over $2 million. And that would take us 10 years worth of rental trucks to equal that, which is about the lifecycle of the truck. So it works out very well. And then it's also offsetting the cost of the maintenance of those vehicles, which are very expensive because they set so much, which is about $80,000 annually. So if you had a chance to look at the slide, I kind of gave a recap of 2023 and 2024, 25. It's really the bolded portions of that that I was trying to get to showcase. Although we bought a lot of vehicles for the city in safety and fire and EMS and so forth, we only were able to address about 23 of those vehicles for the rest of the city. So that's for every other department that we have in the city, every other place we have in the city. There's 230 vehicles that are beyond their useful life. 23 vehicles is not a very big dent in that capacity. The same thing for 2024. We had some increase in debt bond funding that reduced the amount of money that we had to go spend for vehicles. We went from $400,000 in 2023 of debt bond payment to $900,000. And so we were only able to purchase about 12 various vehicles outside of fire and EMS and safety and support. So for 2025, we still have the 900 and some thousand dollar bond payment. So that's going to reduce, you know, the funding that we have to go address the rest of the city departments. But by leasing and by looking at the leasing, which is being done in other areas in Richmond and Tidewater and other, you know, entities within the state, in fact, Roanoke City Schools is leasing their people moving vehicles for their officers, and they're expanding their program. And so it's time that I think we take a look at that really seriously this year and to try to maximize the amount of vehicles that we can get replaced to address the 230 and other vehicles such as fire trucks and solid waste trucks. There's leasing programs out there for all of those. And that way, we can have a more true defined lifecycle so that the turnover of those vehicles don't cost us more for maintenance. In the next slide, you know, I want to use the best practices of Sourcewell. We've been working with purchasing and legal to get the contracts in place and to look at what, you know, we can do for the city to maximize that dollar return. We've obtained some approvals from finance to look at the bond dollars to be used in leasing assets for this year. And then as we go forward to look at, you know, what opportunities we have for funding for vehicles. We completed the list of assets that we would like to address in looking at these leasing options to see how many vehicles we could purchase. As I said, in 2023, for the same amount of money that we bought 23 vehicles, we probably could have leased about 100 vehicles for the same amount of money. But we just have to commit to that, you know, that same level of dollar spend every year for the duration of the lease. In this particular instance, we're also talking about leasing for fire apparatus. And one of the things that, as I came to work for the city in the last three years, I've been doing this fleet thing for a little while and working with OEMs and original equipment manufacturers and so forth, ordering vehicles. These specialty pieces like a fire apparatus and ambulance, things of that sort, there's a long lead time. If we place an order today, we're anywhere from 48 to 60 months to even see the vehicle. So we have a fire ladder truck that we ordered last year that we'll see in 2027. So these are the long lead times that we're up against. We have an opportunity to buy some what they call standard or spec trucks. And it's not that they're being built any faster, they've just had them in their queue to be being built, and they're about 24 months from completion. So we have an opportunity to buy these trucks out of the box. Chief Hobak and his team have gone through the specifications with me. We determined that these trucks, these pumper trucks, will help us meet our goals for the National Fire Prevention Association requirements of only having about a 20-year-old truck on site. And there's a reason for that, is because parts are hard to come by, breakdowns are, you know, significant things of that sort. And we're spending a tremendous amount of money trying to keep four trucks alive that are in the reserve status so that we have frontline units when something goes down. So leasing these fire trucks helps us get in line with the NFPA guidelines. It also is about an overall savings of $1 million, even though we're committing to this money, you know, in upcoming for leasing. The lease payments for these per truck is about $126,000 a year. And by placing an order now, we lock the price. The price of these trucks are around $962,000. If we were to place an order for a truck, as I said earlier, it'd be a custom-built truck. They start at 1.2 to 1.4 million dollars each. So we're having some initial savings right out of the gate. And then the overall payback, even with the leasing, we're still saving a few hundred thousand dollars, even with the lease payments. One of the things that I've been looking at is the cash flows of what we have for the repayment of these loans, right? So for the four trucks, it's about $504,000 in payments. Every year, we go through and we surplus the equipment that we're able to replace, whether it's vehicles, equipment, or other equipment goes through our surplus process, the surplus.com. And every year, we net about $400,000 in that fund. And the way it's written right now, about $100,000 of that comes back to fleet, and we use that to help replace some of the equipment, the tools, the training, and things of that sort that we need for our technicians and to, you know, to be able to repair our equipment in a timely manner. What I'm asking is for us to take a look at, taking that entire amount, whatever we net in that and put back in this fire truck replacement program to help pay for those trucks so that we're not taking funds away from that other, our normal funding for the regular vehicles out there. And it also gets us a way to reduce the age of our, four of our reserve vehicles as we implement these trucks and they phase in. So I think it'll be a very good program for that and definitely give us some better, you know, better units on the frontline and giving us much better reserves on the backside. And so that'll be my next ask of you all in the form of a memo and coming through our interim city manager to at least adopt that, you know, for the payment of these trucks. And that'll help us get, you know, to the return on our investment. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Wayne, thank you so much. I have two questions. What is a hot seat RPD vehicle?
So that is a vehicle that very rarely shuts off. They have the patrol shifts that, you know, come on shift at 6:00 in the morning, 6:30 in the morning for deployment. And then somebody gets out of the vehicle and somebody else gets in.
Okay. Continuous use.
Continuous use, continuous duty vehicles.
My next question is more difficult. You may or may not know, but Mack is making all their medium-duty trucks in the Roanoke Valley now. In the past, when I was on council, we specc Volvo, but we didn't have a lot of Class Ones. So now the Board of Authority has done that fairly successfully. Since we have Roanoke City citizens working both at Mack and at Volvo in Dublin, I'm really interested in whether... interested in whether, particularly under leasing, do we have the ability to spec what we might want, and can we help ourselves, help our own citizens and their company by considering working with MAC? When I was on council before, Grumman built fire trucks here.
Yes, sir.
And I went and talked to the gentleman who ran it, and I said, "Why don't you low-bid our trucks?" Because it's really good to say you're built here and we use you here. And they did, and, I mean, they low-bid it, so we didn't do anything unusual. But my sense is, if we can do that kind of thing, we help ourselves. So when we do that, do we have any flexibility at all in the lease side?
We do. So, you know, one of the things that we do when we put together the specifications for a vehicle, for the fit, form, and functionality, right? What is it going to do? Where's it going to, what's it going to operate? That type of thing. We build together the robustness of whatever that vehicle needs to do, whether it's a sedan or a pickup truck or a solid waste truck or a dump truck. And we look at those specifications. The good news is, when it comes to heavy-duty trucks, the front axles, the transmissions, the engines, the differentials, they're all the same. It's just the sheet metal that's different.
Well, I'm an old truck driver, that's the reason I'm asking. But my point is, you know, if we can do that, it's really beneficial. And I've already made some contacts at MAC and at Volvo, and I'm trying to get a name for you.
Okay.
Because I think, if I understand the relationship in Pilaski, they get some help sometime. And if we can work that through the lease, that might save you even more money. But the big picture is, you need to do business with people in your hometown, and that's what I'm really interested in. But what you're saying is that we do have the opportunity to spec. Now, we're not talking about your, you know, your McNellis, those MACs are not made here.
Well, actually, the backs are not made here, but the trucks are the MAC chassis. So we run a significant amount of those MAC chassis today. And so regardless of what we put on the back, whether it's a McNellis or a LeBree or what have you, that would be what we would be looking-
Yeah, the MACs that we're talking about, or I'm talking about are conventional MACs with the hood.
Correct.
But, yeah, okay, that's just fine. I appreciate y'all's patience with me while I talk trucks. And, you know, I still have a CDL, and I've never driven a garbage truck, so you may have to let me drive one in the parking lot one day.
We can make that happen, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council, we will be coming back to you regarding the matter of fire trucks with what we need to do to move forward. We've already met with Mrs. Trent and finances, and I was wondering if Chief Hoback, who has met with me so many times in regarding to this issue, I'm glad I was able to bring it forward. Are there any comments you'd like to make since he is the expert on what he needs to deliver his services to our citizens?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tatten. Yes, we support what Wayne Farley is trying to do, and as he indicated, the complication of building trucks and delivery of trucks has been really complicated by COVID. And we're now looking at forty-eight, fifty months delivery of an engine. The cost is going up exponentially every time, every six months, they're getting a six percent increase. And by doing this, these trucks are already in the slot to be built. They were already with the manufacturer that we do business with, and they meet our specs. And these trucks will suit, if you've not been to Fire Station Two, it'll be identical to what Fire Engine Two is like, five-hundred-gallon truck, same pump, same engine, same everything. It's just the fact that it was already in the built, to be built. By doing that, we are saving substantial amount of money. Myself, as chief of the department, I understand this is a heavy ask, it really is, but we have at least two trucks of twenty-five years plus, and we have some other trucks that are pushing twenty. I have mentioned one that needs to be replaced immediately, and this would give us a two-year window to get those trucks in versus a four- or five-year window. That will save maintenance, that will save a huge amount of workload off of Wayne Farley's workshop, and it'll give us a more reliable, more dependable fleet. As you know, we build trucks to spec, kind of like Wayne Farley indicated. They spec the foundation, the rails, the brakes, the rear end, the front end, the transmission, everything else. We build the box around it so that it meets our needs. And our apparatus committee is very sensitive to the fact that we know this is a heavy ask. That's why we're moving forward and want to support this type of lease purchase, this type of truck, which is identical to what we have at Station Two, and it will meet our needs as it relates to ISO accreditation and how we deploy hose and how we deploy suppression activities on the fire ground. So this is, again, I understand this is a heavy ask, but it is something that is desperately needed as it relates to keep our fleet reliable, not only today, but in the near future, as we know we're going through a very difficult time. I ordered ambulances two years ago. We have five ambulances on order right now. We are desperate for ambulances, but let me tell you, they're not going to be here until 2025 or 2026. You can't get ambulances. Mr. Farley and I are going down, actually, to the manufacturer this fall to see what we can, you know, figure out, but it is twenty-five and twenty-six before we'll get ambulances. And that's going to create some problems for us as well.
You're so big, can't you threaten?
No, you know, I can be persuasive. I can be very persuasive, but you understand, there is probably eight or nine hundred fire departments and private EMS agencies out there that are doing the same. And the number-one company is New York City. And if you go down there, they'll set everything aside and put New York City through because they are the biggest, you know, biggest customer they have of this plant. So we are where we are today, and because of production time and parts and everything else, it's nobody's fault, but we are way behind. And I will tell you that the fleet manager staff is doing a superb job keeping things up, but there's a kind of time that we may not because of part availability for something else. So I know it's a heavy lift, there's huge amounts of need within our local government, you know, solid waste and everything else, but, you know, I've got to speak on behalf of the men and women that ride the trucks, reliability so that our citizens go forward, and we do have the alarms that we are able to answer them without any problems, maintenance issues and things of that nature. So we greatly appreciate your positive consideration on this.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Chief, I think you kind of answered it, and I apologize if I missed this. Is this lease purchase?
Yes.
Is this a lease purchase? You can pay it off at any given time during that ten-year period. At the end of the ten years, the truck becomes ours.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're just, instead of paying upfront that amount of money, we're doing it over the years, and then if the city has surplus or whatever, all kind of money, they can actually pay that debt down and eliminate that debt, reoccurring cost, depending on surplus or whatever thing happens in the future. But again, this is challenging times for us, and we feel this is the best course to be able to secure the stability of our fleet.
Thank you.
Thank you all. The option on this is relatively timely because there are other departments that could do the same thing with these trucks, and there's only four available. So the quicker we act on them, the better off we are today.
Yes.
Thank you. That was very persuasive.
I know. Like, okay, do it now.
Do we have a resolution?
No, I'm going to ask, I think we're at the point, all I have to do, since it's on the outside, we've got the money, and he has the letter from the company. It's not an action that council will take, I was calling it to your attention, but we're ready to move. Okay? All right.
Well, let's do it.
Right, okay.
Thank you all.
Does that conclude everything?
That concludes the special presentation on my side. Yes, thank you.
All right. Well, now we're going to go back to items recommended for action. Item A is the acceptance of funds from the city of Salem for the shared installation cost of regional gateway signs. There's a, there's two measures, one's a resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
All right. Right, Madam Clerk, could you please read the title of the paragraph?
Yes, sir. A resolution accepting funds from the city of Salem, Virginia in the amount of $17,315 to the city of Roanoke, Virginia for their shared cost for the purchase and installation of the wayfinding sign located at the border of Salem and Roanoke pursuant to a memorandum of understanding for the installation and maintenance of wayfinding sign dated March 23rd, 2022.
All right. Any discussion, my members of council? All right, see, heard none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the city of Salem for the installation of a regional gateway sign, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2024-2025 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right. Any discussion, my members of council? Heard none. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item B is the acceptance of the FY 2025 Virginia Sexual and Domestic Violence Victim Fund Grant. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the FY 2025 Virginia Sexual and Domestic Violence Victim Fund Grant from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and authorizing the execution and filing of appropriate documents to obtain such funds.
All right, any discussion, my members of council? Heard none. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. We have a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services for the Sexual Domestic Violence Victim Grant, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2024-2025 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any discussion, my members of council? Heard none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Adoption of a resolution of support for VDOT Small-Scale 2026 Grant Applications.
Move the resolution. Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
A resolution supporting three applications and authorizing the city manager or her designee to submit three applications to the Virginia Department of Transportation, VDOT, for funds from the Smart Scale Program for certain projects, and authorizing the city manager or her designee to take certain actions in connection with such projects.
All right, any discussion, my members of council? Heard none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Item D is the acceptance of the FY 24-4 for life payment. The number four for life payment. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you please read the title of the paragraph?
A resolution authorizing acceptance of the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Health FY 24-4 for life payment for emergency medical services made to the city of Roanoke and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
All right, any discussion, my members of council? Heard none. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Or does the budget ordinance?
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Virginia Department of Emergency Medical Services for the 4-for-life program, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2024-2025 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any discussion, my members of council? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item E is acceptance and appropriation of FY 22 and FY 23 Southwest Virginia All Hazards Incident Management Team Grants. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of funding from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management to the city of Roanoke for the FY 22 and FY 23 Southwest Virginia All Hazards Incident Management Team Grants, and authorizing the city of Roanoke and the Roanoke Fire EMS to serve as the fiscal agents for the distribution of the grant funds, and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Any discussion, my members of council? Heard none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. If we have a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management for the SWVA All Hazards Incident Management Team, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2024-2025 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any discussion, my members of council? Heard none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item F is an adoption of a resolution of support to recertify the city of Roanoke as a certified crime prevention community. There's a resolution.
Move it.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the city's participation in the Virginia Certified Crime Prevention Community Program.
All right. All right. Is there any discussion, my members of council?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I did have a question on this one.
Yes.
Uh, and this one is for our interim city manager. Uh, when I read we're doing a recertification, and my question is, uh, and you may not know, and I apologize for putting you on the spot, uh, does the city have to recertify annually, uh, since we're having to do this again? Or was there a reason for not? Uh, for, was there an oversight for the, for missing the certification? That it expired?
I will have to research that, but usually it is annually.
Okay.
Okay, but I'll get.
Oh, I think you guys.
Officers here, maybe.
It's actually every three years.
Oh, every three. Oh, it's every three years, so it was time. Okay, that's what I need. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Call the row?
Yes.
All right, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Voloson.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Item G is acceptance of the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation Community Flood Preparedness Fund Grant for the First and Salem Stormwater Drainage Improvement Project. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
A resolution authorizing acceptance of the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation for the Community Flood Preparedness Fund Grant for the First and Salem Stormwater Drainage Improvement Project made to the city from DCR upon certain terms and conditions, and authorizing the city manager to execute any required documentation on behalf of the city in order to accept the grant.
Excuse me. Any discussion, my members of council? Hurrying now, Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Voloson.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Virginia Department of Conservation for the First and Salem Stormwater Drainage Project, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2024-2025 Stormwater Fund Appropriations, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any discussion for members of council? Hurrying now, Madam Clerk, call the row, please.
Mr. Voloson.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item H is acceptance of the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation Community Flood Preparedness Fund Grant for the Ore Branch Stream and Flood Plane Restoration Project. There's a resolution.
Move it.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
A resolution authorizing acceptance of the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation for the Community Flood Preparedness Fund Grant for the Ore Branch Stream and Flood Plane Restoration Project made to the city from DCR upon certain terms and conditions, and authorizing the city manager to execute any required documentation on behalf of the city in order to accept the grant.
All right, any discussion for members of council? Hurrying now, Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Voloson.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Virginia Department of Conservation for the Ore Branch Stream Restoration Project, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2024-2025 Stormwater Fund Appropriations, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any discussion, my members of council? Hurrying now, Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Voloson.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. Mr. Fitzpatrick. Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. I'm pleased to recognize again our city manager for any more further comments you may have.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, I'd like to express my heartfelt appreciation for the many expressions of sympathy and kindness shown to me and my family, my Roanoke family during the passing of my sister, Gwendolyn Joyce Rogers, the matriarch of our family. My heart remains heavy, however, through your prayers, my bereavement gets much lighter. Thank you. I have a tour scheduled for the Jefferson Center on August the 12th, and I'll bring back to you recommendations for the top facility funding needs to our August 19th meeting. In addition, on Friday, I visited and spent time with both police and the Sheriff's Department. We were scheduled for me to go to fire, but a vicious storm came that evening, and we canceled, so I'm rescheduled to go visit them. Just an update on something that I've planned and I'm sharing with you. It's called the City Council Department Tours. As, as city manager, I have the city departments developing a familiarization tour for the city council members, uh, where they will present each department's vision and goals, work delivery, and organizational structure. The tour will have, will be planned where two city council members will be visiting three departments per day, starting at the end of August, and will be working with the city clerk's office to schedule the visitations to the familiarization tour. Call to your attention deer culling. Uh, we're working with Chief Booth and his team to outline the culling initiative to address the deer population in communities across Roanoke. With the current budget of $40,000, it will only target 200 deer. So we are prepared to increase the funding to make a more significant impact on this matter. Uh, spoke with Chief Booth today, and once they have the timeframe to start, um, you will know. I'm gonna call quickly Mr. Campbell to come up, because today you all received an email regarding the Old Southwest and traffic. And so Mr. Campbell will speak to you on traffic calming. Mr. Campbell, quickly.
While he comes, Dr. Patton, is there a way we can get word out to tell people stop feeding deer?
Well, um, I just shared with Mr. Voloson, and by now my son and his family have returned and touched down in Denver from Japan. This week I found out that in Osaka, Japan, that deer are everywhere, and they're part of, they've become domesticated, and they're part of the culture. And so I was explaining to my grandkids, well, you need to go look up the word "culling", because we are addressing an issue here in Roanoke, but people really aren't gonna stop. They, I mean, how do we stop people from feeding? We can encourage.
Biggest problem is flowers and stuff.
Stop planting flowers.
Yeah, we can encourage.
It's just normal plants.
Right. I will, I will have in, in this work that we are doing to look, but it was just, hit me with two different cultures. I'm dealing with this one and this one over here. So I will, I will definitely inquire and see how some other cities, particularly Fairfax and, um, another city.
We've done this before.
Yeah, that are really addressing it.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. I've been to Osaka many times in my previous career, and I can tell you that deer may be everywhere, but they're not friendly. Uh, at least the deer here are friendly as they eat your flowers. I, I am, uh, I'm here on Dr. Patton's request to address you, Mr. Mayor Lee, and, and honorable members of council about full southwest traffic. As you know, that we've received several emails over the past few months with concerns. And I want to stand before you today and assure you that we have used sound judgment and engineering standard of care in practicing and enacting remedies to ensure that we are calming traffic there in Old Southwest associated with the Wasina Bridge construction. And really, where do we start with that? We started by communicating with the neighborhood. And, and by communicating, I mean listening. That includes several email, phone exchanges, but also sitting with members of the community one-on-one over glass eliminating baked goods. We have heard the community, we understand their concerns. Uh, the, the practice and the standard of care which we have applied is based upon guidelines, based upon policy, and based upon regulations outlined by the Federal Highway Administration and by the Virginia Department of Transportation. And the remedies we have applied are consistent with those recommendations, policies, and regulations. They, uh, they include traffic studies. Uh, we, uh, we have studied the traffic there in the Southwest immediately following the close of the bridge, uh, in conjunction not only with the sensors that I have within my control, public works that have your speed is and gives you a mileage. The Roanoke Police Department has also deployed their stealth radar. These are not a regulatory radar, meaning they can't issue citations with them, but they are concealed. And what we have learned from both sets of those studies is we have learned that the average speed in Old Southwest is 15 to 16 miles an hour. The posted citywide speed limit is 25 miles an hour. Ninety-five percent of the drivers are traveling at 19 miles an hour or less in that. Now, we will continue to study, and we are getting ready to have a change in traffic patterns as children go back to school, and we will, I'm not going to, uh, to forecast too much, but we will, uh, have additional traffic studies happen with the change in traffic patterns with kids going back to school. We have applied, or installed initially with the detours, 70 signs, citywide, explaining where the detours are. And following the concerns that we heard from the citizens, we've increased that specifically in Old Southwest by an addition of 26 signs that are compliant with the Federal Highway Administration MUCTD. That is the Municipal Uniform Transportation Control Devices Manual. And, uh, and so those, uh, those remedies have been implied out there. Now, as I look at this guidance, the most, uh, or, or specifically from VDOT, one of the things that is most commonly recommended is a, a top recommendation is roadway narrowing. And we've applied that remedy in several places throughout the city. But we look at different ways that you roadway narrow, and one of the most effective ways of doing that is with on-street parking. And we heard earlier today in the planning commission meeting about on-street parking and the specific use there in Old Southwest, and we continue to monitor that and make sure that it's appropriately, appropriately used. There have also been suggestions from the committee about additional stop signs and speed bumps, and I can assure you that as we look at guidance, that those remedies are not appropriate here, and they will increase safety risk and increase aggressive driving behavior. We can think about that maybe in a, in a shopping center parking lot where you come across a speed hump, and how, uh, in our own personal behavior, the tendency is to slow down rapidly just before you hit that speed hump, which creates some braking noise, and then to accelerate rapidly once you pass over it. And so those, uh, those remedies would not be appropriate there. We've also worked with our partners in the Roanoke Police Department. They have been and will continue to, uh, to provide enforcement action in there. I should note, uh, in data that I've received from Chief Booth and been authorized to share, is that during an enforcement period that ran, uh, through late June, they made 78 stops. Eighty-three, eighty-three percent of those were failure to stop. And so, uh, so eighty, eighty-three percent of those. So, um, what can we do? What else is left? And, and that's an interesting question. We are, uh, this week, uh, undertaking our Vision Zero Community Engagement Week. And for those that are interested in participating from the community, that schedule is posted on the City of Roanoke webpage, and it can be easily searched, and there are several engagement opportunities. We've also just recently completed our DMV Safety Action Campaign, encouraging motorists to slow down, and you see those yard signs, and they're still available, that are distributed throughout the community. We did have speakers today that talked about, uh, our Complete Streets Guidance, and I will assure you that the Vision Zero Community Engagement Plan this week is a lead-in process whereby we, the City of Roanoke and staff, will undertake a, uh, action in association with members of the community to update our safety action plan, which will lead us into updating that Complete Streets policy. I should note that the enacted guidance is the National Association of City Transportation Officials. Uh, that is only their recommendations. The Federal Highway Administration just updated the policy on Complete Streets this February, February 2024. And so we'll make sure that we are, are consistent with that, but we wanted to get the community engagement as we went through that. So anyway, I wanted to share with, with you, Mayor Lee and honorable council members, what we have done, we will continue to do. This is not a closed case. We will continue to engage. Uh, in fact, we've got three more signs coming, uh, here in the near term for, for Old Southwest, and we, we do find this very important, and we will continue to, to do what we can to work with the community to, to engage with them, to, to hear their concerns, and also communicate to the community at large that traffic, traffic safety is all our responsibility.
Thank you. Any questions?
Ross, thank you for this. I, I know people get frustrated. We could put up a million signs, and we'd probably still have people that not pay attention to them. I often, you know, I live at a four-way stop, and I often say, you know, as I watch car after car go through the four-way stop from both directions, that people today, drivers today, just think those are guidelines instead of stop signs, and it's very frustrating. And, um, but the, I, I think the lingering question, and I know you all have worked to, to address this, and I'm not sure how much more we can do to address it, but the concern about large trucks, uh, coming down very narrow streets. Uh, it's one thing for, you know, Valley Metro to come down or the school bus, but when you have these large trucks, tractor-trailers, that are coming down streets that were never intended, even with signage that says no trucks, no vans. Are there other things we can do to alert? I, I don't even know if these are local trucking companies that are sending trucks down here. Because I know you've worked to make sure that when trucks are routing themselves, that they're going the appropriate, uh, detour, which is Memorial, 13th to Campbell and around. But people are still cutting through, so do you have any advice or?
We, we've looked at that, Vice Mayor, and we've actually installed signs that are pretty explicit. They say, "Your GPS is wrong." Explanation point.
I've seen them. I've seen them.
And, and, and the feedback from the community has been mixed on those signs. Uh, we have some community members that are frustrated because their businesses rely on trucking traffic to, uh, to complete their, their product. And so we've got to be very careful on how we do that. So we've communicated as, as closely as we can, uh, for local deliveries only. Uh, I have seen pictures, uh, and I have seen some of the trucks. They range from city vehicles, uh, outperforming their business, uh, so that may be a solid waste truck with a knuckle boom that is collecting bulk items. Uh, in the case of stormwater, using our Mack dump truck. Uh, we, we fall behind the street sweepers, so the street sweepers don't need to return back to the service center to dump their load. And so, uh, you will have that, that dump truck traveling through. So you have that on the low end, you also have some local delivery, uh, local delivery, uh, vehicles as well. That's not to say that we're catching that 100%, but, uh, from what I've seen, you've got, uh, you've got a variety of vehicles that, um, probably do have reason to be in there, but it, it is confined, and it is tough. It's not an easy solution.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good update.
All right, uh, item two is, I mean, City Attorney, 2A, is an adoption of an ordinance to amend City Code Section 32-283 definitions.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
All right, well, I mean, I haven't finished reading all the whole.
Oh, I thought, I thought the clerk was gonna do that. I'm sorry, ma'am.
No, well, I tell you what, let's go ahead and move in there. Motion was, we got a motion, we got a second. Read the title of the paragraph, ma'am.
An ordinance amending and re-ordaining Section 32-283 definitions, Article 14, Tax on Prepared Food and Beverage, Chapter 32, Taxation Code of the City of Roanoke, 1979, as amended to remove snack foods as that, that term is defined therein from the tax on prepared food and beverage, establishing an effective date, and dispensing with a second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, any discussion, my members of council?
No, I, I just wondered if the Commissioner of the Revenue's assistant might have a statement for us.
Mr. Mayor, uh, members of council, city manager, clerk, attorney, I believe my assistant has, uh, gavelled out for the night. But in regards to this particular ordinance, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them. Again, this is not part of an ongoing effort that, uh, we are undertaking in my office to ensure that code is clean, it's easy to understand, it's easy to follow, and it's easy to enforce.
Thank you.
All right.
It's all because of you.
How old is baby?
Oh, sorry. Uh, she's six months as of Saturday.
Oh.
Yeah.
So precious.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Ready to call the row?
I'm ready. Mr. Voloson.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Reports of committees, none. Today, unfinished business, we have none. Introduction and consideration of ordinance and resolutions, none. Motion and miscellaneous business, inquiries or comments by the mayor and/or members of city council? Does anybody have any inquiries or comments?
I'd like to ask the city manager to get back to us. It's, uh, abominable to me that we are an eight-time All-America City, but we don't have it in signage when you come into the city, helping our visitors know how good we are. we don't deserve to have our own sign welcoming people to the City of Roanoke after that, um, which also probably ought to include that we had the first, uh, volunteer rescue squad in the world, and the first African-American volunteer rescue squad in the world. Um, I'd like to have a report back on how we might make that possible, but to not celebrate eight times of being an All-American City for our citizens, some of whom don't know that, but most of all, for those people from North Carolina that come up here and think they do everything right in Greensboro in Charlotte, I want to send them a message.
I would ask, are we talking about, um, the City of Roanoke has entrance signs already?
Yes, and those signs, all those signs would need to have is some vinyl put on them with what I'm talking about, and I've already looked at that, so we wouldn't have to replace anything, we'd just have to put some nomenclature on it, and that would be fine on the current signs.
And what about banners that actually say, City of Roanoke, eight-time?
I think, and, and, well, I mean, I think they've done some of that already, Mayor. Uh, down around, right around downtown, you've got some, but to me, it's more important when you have visitors coming in at the city limit signs to say, welcome to Roanoke, eight-time All-America City, um, which is, I think, outstanding, and this started when I was a kid, and the pride factor was huge back then, and to me, it's still big, and to be, what, second, there's only one city that has more than we do, is that correct?
San Antonio.
Yeah, so, um, there's blank space on all of those signs, um, and I'll be glad to work with you. We did a lot of signage on the buses for the Commonwealth Coach and Trial Museum, so I know the places to go and how to.
I can, I can work on it and get back with members of council.
It'll be great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item then is vacancies on certain authority boards, commissions, and committees appointed by the council, and, uh, Vice Mayor, do you have that?
Yep, I'm ready.
All right.
All right.
Uh, we're gonna talk about appointment and reapportment, and I'll call, excuse me, call on Vice Mayor, call.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, for Board of Trustees, City of Roanoke Pension Plan, we previously appointed Andy Foley at our July meeting, uh, but we need to approve a residency waiver. Um, under Human Services Advisory Board, Advisory Board, the appointment of Gwendolyn Coleman, Director of Social Human Services, as an ex-officio member. Millmountain Advisory Board, uh, the appointment of Kimberly Mattson to fill the unexpired term of office for Stephen Terry McGuire, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and this would be for a three-year term. For the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, appointment of Cindy McFaul, Director of Parks and Recreation as an ex-officio member. Uh, for the Personnel and Employment Practices Commission, Luke Pugh was appointed at the meeting in July, but we need to approve a residency waiver for him. For the Roanoke Arts Commission, uh, Doctor, the appointment of Dr. Elizabeth Dulemba, uh, to fill the unexpired term of office for Carl Willers, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and I believe this would be for a three-year term. For the Roanoke Redevelopment and Housing Authority, um, appointing Deborah Carter, uh, for the expiration, uh, this is for a new term, uh, following the expiration, the four-year term of office for Dwayne Smith, public housing resident, ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. For the Roanoke Valley Juvenile Detention Center Commission, um, the appointment of, uh, Trinity Kaseke, um, who also would need a residency waiver to replace, uh, Jason Cromer and fill his unexpired term of office, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. I believe that's all, that's everything there.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, normal procedures, as we, as a clerk will be calling the roll. If you are in agreement, please let it be known by the saying of, uh, all nominees. Madam Clerk, call roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Voloson.
All nominees.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
All nominees.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
All nominees.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
All nominees.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
All nominees.
Ms. White Boyd.
All nominees.
And Mayor Lee.
All nominees. All right, if there be no further business, you'll come before this council, the council meeting is adjourned.
Industry is changing fast, and older plants, like the one Tyson was running in Dexter, haven't kept up.
We have a pretty young industry, so you have processing plants that were open, it's, you know, you think in the seventies and eighties and nineties, and now we're kind